My mom. Well, he might be back right away. They have to wait for fifteen minutes after the injection.
Yeah.
All right.
My mom back in.
Oh, sorry. It looks like we have about a minute.
Okay.
Oh, okay. My mom back in Maryland texted.
I'll be turning it over to Peter and then Peter and Kim will start things off, right? Yep.
Hi Greg, this is Bessie. Thanks for doing this for us.
Hi Bessie.
How are you?
Good to see you.
The light's really bright. Let me turn that off.
There's two Gregs on the call.
Oh, Dr. Hayman.
Yes, thank you. And hello to the other Greg.
Yeah, me too.
Gabe, you're here today? Yes, he is.
This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everyone. Today, your meeting, it's not a city council meeting, but we're meeting a joint meeting with the Human Relations Commission. I'd like to thank Dr. Greg Hayman for being here with us today and the other participants. Say again? Oh, so we're going to call the meeting to order and Gabe, can you please put the pledge of allegiance up? Matt? Pledge of Allegiance in the flag of the United States of America, into the proverb which stands, "One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Thank you very much. Gabe, can you do a roll call, please?
Yes, Your Honor. And I'd like to note, since this is the first time with many of the names, please give me a little lenience and help me out if I don't pronounce your name correctly. Commissioners Chartier.
Oh, not a commissioner. Well, yeah, I guess I am. Yeah.
Cummings.
Present.
Miave.
Present.
Morris.
Here.
Newton.
Here.
Samuels. And Soriano.
Present.
I just saw Commissioner Samuels just logged in. All right. Counselors Olson. Novak.
Here.
Bartholomew.
Here.
Kupcinski. Bessie Johnson.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
And Mayor Alex Johnson II.
Here, present.
All Commissioners present and two Counselors absent.
Okay, thank you very much. Introduction to Council. So everybody, could you please take a moment and introduce yourself? I'll start at the top with, is Lorraine Sorensen a Commissioner?
She is not.
She is not. You know, with Counselor Johnson?
Sorry, I had done me. I'm Bessie Johnson. I'm Counselor from Ward Three.
Okay, and then Juan, would you please go?
Sure. Hello, everybody. My name is Juan Miave. It rhymes with agave, I think, for people that just joined us. I'm a real estate agent here in Albany amongst other things. I'm happy to be here. Ward Two is where I reside, the animal kingdom.
Thank you very much. Counselor Smith?
Marilyn Smith, City Council, Ward Three. This is my first term. I'm a former city employee, former newspaper reporter. I've lived here for forty-one years and I helped write the ordinance that started the Human Relations Commission.
Dr. Dana, Commissioner Morris?
Hi there. So my name is Dana Morris and I'm happy to be a part of this today. So I am in the IT world and have a background of social services. Nice to meet everyone.
Commissioner Cummings, you're next up.
Hello, everyone. Miriam Cummings. I am currently the Executive Director for Casa Latinos Unidos. We serve in Lynn and Benton County. So I am also in the School Board with the Lincoln and Lincoln ESD as well. I am representing Zone Six with the LBL ESD Board and I am an advocate and a fighter. So, yeah, now you know a little bit more about me.
Thank you very much, Count Commissioner. Commissioner Samuels?
How you doing? Derek Samuels, my first year, I'm new here. I'm currently a police officer with the City Police Department. This is my first time being involved in something like this and I'm very excited to be here.
Good to have you. Thank you very much. Commissioner Bartholomew, the Council of Bartholomew, sorry.
Hi, I'm Stacy Bartholomew, Counselor for Ward Two. I'm very happy to be here and I am the newest Counselor.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Counselor Bartholomew. Counselor Novak?
Hi, I'm Matilda Novak. I am new to the City Council on Ward One and very happy to be here and happy to have my appointee Derek Samuels here as well.
Okay, and Counselor Soriano, Commissioner Soriano?
Oh, yeah, welcome. I am a dentist for over twenty years in the Albany Corvallis area and I currently work in Lane Community Clinic Dental Clinic down in Eugene. And I also reside in the animal kingdom, so, and I believe that's Ward Two, so.
Yes, it is.
I'm happy to be aboard.
Thank you very much for joining us this evening. Commissioner?
Good evening. I'm Leslie Chartier. I currently work at the Oregon Employment Department in the Paid Family and Medical Leave Insurance Division and I represent Ward Three.
Thank you for joining us, Commissioner. Commissioner Newton?
Hello, my name is Stephanie Newton. I just began my second term here on the Human Relations Commission. Professionally, I have a small business and marketing consultant and in addition to serving on the HRC, I also serve as the Disability Justice Caucus Chair for the State of Oregon.
Well, thank you very much, Commissioner Newton. And I think that's everyone. I'll turn it over to Peter Chilton now, our City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening to all of you. I am, as Mayor Johnson said, the City Manager for the City of Albany and I consider it to be a great honor. We are here this evening to dedicate some time solely to talking about our Human Relations Commission. And many will recall that I committed to the Council last year that we would return early this year with an opportunity for the Council to review the Charter of the Commission and to make changes as necessary or validate the Charter as it is. For the seven members of the R.C., welcome and thank you for agreeing to serve. I know that it's a demand on your time and we're very grateful for your commitment. Six of you are new. We have several new Counselors as well, so this is really a new start. But the newness doesn't end there. Jorge Salinas, whom you remember, who so capably provided staff support to the HRC, is now the Deputy County Administrator in Flagler County, Florida. So I would like to introduce to you the person who has taken on that role. She's been with the city now for about a year and a half as our Parks and Recreation Director. She's had some very difficult times in dealing with the crises that the pandemic has created for the city. So in that context, I'm doubly glad that Kim Ledain has agreed to take on the role. Thank you, Kim. You want to wave there? There you are. Okay. You may have noticed in Dr. Hayman's read-ahead papers, a question mark next to eight PM. We can certainly go till eight PM, but I would suggest that optimal performance of a group is about ninety minutes. Not that I think the conversation has to be limited to ninety minutes. We've also tentatively scheduled March twenty-two, twenty-second, to resume the conversation as necessary. Now, many of you are used to using these virtual platforms. It's still difficult for many of us. I know this is the first time that Dr. Hayman has tried to do this on a virtual platform. So one of our challenges is going to be trying to recognize raised hands. So some platforms have a raised hand feature. This one does not. So in order to be called upon, I would ask for you to wave your hand in front of the screen or wave a pencil as the Council has come into the practice of doing. The subject is important, but personally, I don't think that means that you can't enjoy the conversation and I hope you do. Before we started, there was some talk about being nervous. Don't be nervous. We're all friends. Now, before I introduce our facilitator, please ensure that your name appears on your screen the way you want it to. Thank you, Juan. I think that's a big help, although your little tile on my screen is smart, so you're small, so your last name is truncated. But I think, I think everybody got your pronunciation correctly. This will be a real help to all the new people and to the old people. But let's get to it. We're very happy that Dr. Hayman has agreed to facilitate our conversation. Dr. Hayman retired last year as President of Lynn Benton Community College after serving LBCC for eleven years. He's not really retired, though, as he now consults for the Oregon Community College Association. Greg's doctorate is in Educational Leadership from Gonzaga University. He also has a Master's in Counseling Psychology from Trinity Evangelical Divinity School and a Bachelor's Degree in both Psychology and Social Studies Education from the University of Minnesota. Perhaps most important for us tonight, he has experience as a marriage counselor. Greg, thank you very much for your help this evening and let me turn it over to you.
Well, Peter, thank you very much for that introduction. As I get older, I forget a lot about my own history and sometimes that's really good. I have sent you, I think, an outline of what I hope we're able to do, I think. And I just want to review that with you to make sure that this makes sense to everyone and then get on with kind of a structured conversation. I, Peter had mentioned that I'm not used to doing this. The truth of the matter is I do this every day on Zoom. What I am not familiar with is go-to meetings and so it's slightly different product and I'm hoping that that won't inhibit my ability to support you in this effort. So we're going to try to do this in less than two hours, which means, and the goal is that we will all have had opportunity to speak and to hear and that we will have, I hope, a comprehensive record of the inputs that we have with regards to the role of this important commission. And then with all of that information, as I think Peter has indicated, on a subsequent meeting, the Council would take up the issue of any revision in the Charter for this Council as you move forward. And so it's really important that we have an opportunity for all of us to share and so I'm going to try to kind of keep us structured in terms of time. So I'll say a little bit about what I think that means. There are, I believe, potentially fourteen of you who are contributing to this conversation. And we have four questions that I have asked you to think about and respond to. So I'm hoping that we can, for each of those questions, you can limit your responses to no more than two minutes. We would give ourselves time for each one of us to respond to one question and then allow for a little question and answer after that and then go on to the next question. And then, and then try to bring all of that again together to help us to better, I think, provide a clear and shared understanding of where, of the role that this commission will play in Albany's future. I do want, I've written this and I think it's already been stated, be clear. While the input of all of us in this gathering is critically important, ultimately, it's the decision of the Council as to what the purpose of this commission is. And I think I want to make sure that we have provided, as a result of this conversation, as thorough of a set of input as we can to help inform that really important decision that they have. So before we move forward, just are there any questions? Hi, Ray.
I made it finally, got the shot too.
Yeah, and you shaved quite a bit off of your face since last I saw you.
I've been requested to play a guy in a red suit again this Christmas time carousel, so I had to let it grow now.
Well, good. So I am, I know there are people on this that are not a member of either the Commission or the Council. I'm going to, I guess I'm going to try and go through the list as it appears on my screen. I don't know if you know this, but none of our lists look the same, so it won't look like your list. And then hopefully politely urge you to complete your comments so we can move on to the other person. And if I call in somebody that's not a part of either a Commissioner or a Council, I'll try to make a note of that, so I at least don't do it for the next question. So. I'm, again, I'm grateful to be a part of this. As I mentioned, while I'm, I think about, you know, some of you having been a member of this community for a long, 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 long time and this is my thirteenth year, but I've certainly come to love this community. And it's a very unique community that is both, both, I guess, down-to-earth and really aspirational when it comes to its future. And it's just as exciting to be a part of that. And so I really think this is really a representation of that, of that important work. So I'm going to, here we go, one more thing. If you can, please, please provide video on the screen. I just think it really helps our conversation to be able to see each other. I, hopefully, that they are able to do that. And also, when you are not speaking, would you please mute your mic? As I think it will be much easier for us to hear, hear each other. So. Let's see. I'm going to have to get this right. I think on my list, the first person is Bessie Johnson. And so I'm going to ask you to respond to a question. What, the first question, which is, what problems and challenges, if any, is this commission needing to address or resolve?
Well, from the experience that I've had being on Council for, last time we had one of these meetings has been about five or six years ago, I think. And I think the Council and the Commission kind of got on different pathways as to what the Council thought the Commission was going to be and what the Commission thought they were going to be. So it's basically just trying to get an understanding that we're kind of going in the same direction. I think there was a question of, well, if you're, if you're doing this, I know one of the former counselors, you know, just say, well, you got to get my permission. Well, I don't think that's true. I think it's basically, we have to agree on what this commission is for. You know, whether, whether it be to sponsor events or to just be an ear for people who are having problems, you know, because I'm sure, let's see, let me think of the kind of name here. Derek hears more than I do and the same way with Leslie. They hear a lot of different things that might not come to me and I don't think there's a problem. So, and I see Chief Harndon is on too. So I just think that we need to get an understanding of what the Council is expecting the Commission, what their role is. And I think that's been a real disadvantage for both sides, both sides, the Council and the Commission. And so I'm hoping that we can get some clarity.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Bessie. Juan, you're next on my screen. So that same question, what, what problems or challenges is this commission needing to address or solve?
Thank you. So normally, I advise people against reading from a script, but because you sent the question ahead of time, I wrote a little bit something down and I'll do my best to read it without it sounding too stilted, so bear with me. The question was, what problems or challenges is this commission needing to address/resolve? The challenge before the HRC is to strengthen the connections within Albany and its communities. Today, it is all too evident in the news and social media that people have become separated into their own echo chambers and see people of different politics as the enemy. The truth is, just as the poet Maya Angelou stated, "We are more alike, my friends, than we are unalike." The vast majority of people desire the same things: safety for their family and their neighbors, some neighbors, jobs to work, education for their children, and meaning in their lives. By sharing our similarities and respecting our differences, we establish our humanity towards each other. In that humanity, the seeds of respect and civility take root. I believe that the goal of the HRC should be to foster community and understanding of what makes us different in the hopes that it brings people closer together. That's a, that's what I believe. That's why I believe it should be the goal of the HRC. Not so much, we always want to hold our elected officials accountable, but I think that we can have a more surface-level understanding of other people in our community and maybe bring to light that our community is of such a diverse population.
Thanks, Juan.
Yeah.
Marilyn Smith?
Good evening, sir. It's nice to talk to you again.
It's good to see you.
Yes, I wish I could see you. I have a very small screen. I made some notes as well as Juan, but I'll extrapolate here. One of the challenges that the Commission faces, in my opinion, is that it has never had the complete support of the City Council in the fourteen years since it was created. That has been an ongoing problem and it's been a barrier to moving forward. I believe that the Council needs to validate the Commission as worthy and worthwhile and so that's got to be overcome. I believe that the purpose of the Commission needs to be clarified. I think that's part of the reason that the Council hasn't fully supported the Commission because of the, the purpose has never been what the original intent was. It was watered down when the ordinance was written so that it could be acceptable and get four votes on the Council to accept to form it. The members of the Commission, as time has gone on, have had different views about what the Commission should be and so have the Counselors, as the Counselors have changed. So there needs to be a meeting of the minds there, and that's fourteen minds. If we can get a majority of that group, that would be wonderful. I think that the, both a problem and a challenge is getting to know each other. Where a lot of us are new, a lot of new Counselors, a new Mayor, most of the members of the Commission are new to this. So we've all been thrown into this classroom together and we have to find out which seats are most comfortable and then learn together. That's my speech.
Thank you, Marilyn. Mayor Johnson?
So I've had a lot of time to think about this particular situation because I was on Council for two years and now as the Mayor. I didn't like what I saw. I didn't think sponsoring events is great, but I think there needs to be a deeper level of community connection. I mean by that is that I want the Council, this Commission, to provide education, provide a source or resource for people that do want to get to know the community. I personally believe, and this is, I've said this since day one, that I think the name should be changed to Community Relations, not Human Relations, because Human Relations is easy for people to transfer into Human Rights. I think we have laws in place for that. So I think for me, a better fitting name would be Community Relations because ultimately, it's about the city of Albany. Anybody that moves here, anybody that lives here, anybody that visits here, our community is us and we must be better together. We must treat each other better. We must understand each other better. We must communicate with each other better. We cannot do that when we look for what's different. We cannot do that when we look for what's different. We need to look at how we are the same in so many ways. You know, Maya Angelou also said, when somebody shows you who they are, believe them the first time. You know, we want people to come to Albany and visit with us and fellowship with us and enjoy our community, enjoy the things that we have to offer. And if we're if we are focused on just what separates us, we're never, ever, ever going to come together. So I think for me, I'd like the commission to come to us and say, we would like to do this, give this to the community. Because we look to you to help us be better together. And the community is reaching out to us saying. What is it like to be in the citizen city of Albany? The Human Rights Commission, Human Relations Commission, Community Relations Commission can set the tone. Because people look at our website and they see what we do. They look at our minutes, they they find out about us. Well, the us we present, since this the whole thing happened in two thousand seventeen, was not pretty. It was not attractive to people to come to the city of Albany. So I think that with this full support of the council, the mayor. And commissioners working together to put together solutions, opportunities, sponsorships, education for us, for all of us. I think it'd be a really great thing.
Thank you. I think we'll move to Dana Morris. Just reminder. Trying to focus our responses at this round on the kinds of problems or challenges that we think we would want the commission to address. What is, you know? I guess one of the things behind it is, are we trying to solve anything? I guess is a question I'm trying to ask here. Dana. Can't hear you.
Might still be plugged in. Is that better?
Much better.
Wonderful. Okay. So, thank you, Greg, first of all, for facilitating, and I'm very happy to be here. Unfortunately, I did have to give notice. Because we are actually moving in the next few months. Yeah, but I wanted to just start off by saying thank you for having this conversation. I do believe that this is the way to move people into a similar conversation. Is to start off through a question and answer session. So I just want to thank you for the organizers for doing that. And then also, I want to share an apology because I do actually have a quiver that you may hear. So please ignore that. This is just a part of my health that I now live with these days. So that has nothing to do with conversations that are happening. And I would say that the answer to the question that was given. For me is going to be the actual wording that is used in the document that was sent out. And so I would say that it's expected that each. So I would say. Each appointee. It is expected that each appointee will be committed to the philosophy of inclusion, equal opportunity and fair treatment for all residents of Albany. So I really like that phrase because it includes the inclusion, the equal opportunity and the fair treatment. And of course, even to go back to the actual purpose as the HRC was stated, that they explained how that wording was developed. I think that it's a great concept, and I also believe that in order to maintain that. There are going to be additional steps that may be needed than what we've seen in the past.
Thank you very much. Miriam, your input on this question.
Yes, thank you, Greg. So I'm gonna be, you know, coming again in this perspective from what I have heard from the community. Especially the Latinx community, because that is part of the community that I represent. And so coming off it as with that, what I have heard and seen is that the city of Albany hasn't really had. A strong relationship with the Latinx community. So one, one example would be if we look at the website, it's only in English. There are certain parts here and there, they're in Spanish, but ultimately, if you want to be inclusive. And give the the information out to the community, it needs to also be in the target language and the community that it serves. So starting off with that, I feel that the HRC. Is there to bring forward these inequities that we see and to actually be the bridge. From the city of Albany to the community, because I feel that the HRC is a tool that we that the city councils can utilize. To be that bridge, but also to hear from the community what they're experiencing. And so that's what I hope to bring forward is bring in that voice, because many of those voices don't know where to go. And when they know a community member is willing to go ahead and represent them. I'm here to be that voice and that bridge. So with that, I really hope that we can work together. And bring the issues that we see, you know, I'm not expecting to resolve the issues overnight. I know it's a work in progress. But at the same time, you to be able to listen. I think that's the key concept and the key part here is that when we are bringing you information about something that we have experienced. And having a listening ear is key, because we have not been heard many times. And we just need you to at least give us that that platform to be able to have a say. So in that, I feel that there are many things that I'm noticing that we can fix, and as long as we work together. We can slowly address those.
Thank you, Miriam. Derek, same question.
Good evening, folks. Thanks for having me. So this question to me was very difficult to answer because I've never been involved. I can really sense this. So I don't know the problems. The pros and cons that the city is facing. I'm a citizen here. I've been living in Albany for nine years. I moved here from Florida. So my 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 view of the city or our view of a city is a little bit different than it is the folks who've been here for, you know, who grew up here. So, you know, I hate to pass the buck, so to speak, so to speak, but. Coming in, I don't think I can talk about what needs to be fixed and, you know, because I don't know what needs to be fixed. That's why I'm right now, just listening. I'm listening to everybody who's had experience, talk about the pros and the cons, and I'm taking that in.
Well, Derek, that's a very valid response. So thank you for providing that. Consular Bartholomew. You're muted. Thank you.
Hi. I am. Thank you very much for this opportunity to to talk. My neighbor has just dropped by. So I just got a little distracted. Thank you so much. The. I keep looking at our the documents that were presented to us and looking at the purpose of the Human Relations Commission. Being to recommend programs, activities, ordinances, expenditures and other appropriate governmental activities. Which serve the goal of maintaining respectful interactions within our community. And I, when Marilyn Smith, but Counselor Smith spoke about the. Disconnect between the council and the commission, that's. And the lack of acceptance or support for the commission, that is what I saw also as. As a situation that was happening, and that's pretty much what brought me into. Contact with the city council and with with the government processes is that. The beginning of that incident, and that's where I became heavily involved. And so. And that's what I would like to see happen is that this is a great organization. And that or the purpose is a good purpose, and I want to see it happening.
Thank you so much. Consular Novak.
Thank you. Just needed to unmute myself. Um, well, I I want to refer back to what Commissioner Miave. And Mayor Johnson said, I I really think that we benefit when we focus on our common commonalities. I think commonalities unite and differences divide, and I think they stated that really well and eloquently. I would like to see. And as as my neighbor Derek just said. He's new to this commission and I am new to this commission. I'm not entirely sure what the actual purpose is of this commission. I'd like to see that defined really clearly. I'd like to see everyone on the same page, and I'm sure that we will get to that point. But I I would stress again, as has earlier been very eloquently stated, and I know that's partially because they were quoting a woman who's brilliant with words. But I would, I just so agree with that, that we are so much more alike than different. And I would like to see this, the things that we do, I would like to see them be things that unite us. I'm also just a little bit curious with regard to. Oh, forgive me, I don't have everyone's names down. The. Nice woman who spoke a few people ago, who was talking about putting things in Spanish, forgive me, I your name just Marion Cummins, Marion Cummins. Okay, I got it. Forgive me, I don't see everybody on my screen. So unless you're talking, I don't see you, and it makes it harder to remember. But anyway, Ms. Cummins. I, I'm a first generation American. My parents were immigrants. And I I just because she you mentioned putting. Things in Spanish. And it's not that I'm against that. I just I, from my perspective, we're all Americans. And you come to this country and you're living here. And I I just, I'm not entirely sure why it is that that she feels like we need to put stuff in Spanish. Or, you know, you know, I lived in Los Angeles for a time, a long time, and they just felt compelled to put things in everybody's language. There was Vietnamese, there was, you know, every language under the sun, and I feel more like we're in America. And we do have a national language and I and I'm not saying to not to not.
We do not have a national language.
I I'm not saying, well, I'm not saying to to be part, you know, to to disavow your own background, because I I love mine, you know, and. And but my parents, they were so intent on us speaking good English that I I actually didn't even grow up speaking Hungarian in the house. We had another language, it wasn't Hungarian, but my but anyway, my point is, I just, I would like to, I I'm not entirely sure. Why it is that you feel like we need to put it in Spanish, but if I'm I'm not against it, I just am not entirely clear on that.
So Councilor.
Can I answer that question? Because she did refer to me.
Let me, let me get back to that, Miriam. Okay, I just want to remind all of us, our purpose here is to state our own inputs on a question and not to critique each other's input.
I didn't mean to be critical. That wasn't a criticism, just so you know, that wasn't a criticism at all.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Miriam, I want to get back to that. I want to give everybody their chance to put input and then come back, okay? So don't, we won't lose it.
I just figured since it was, if I was mentioning that that I wanted to make sure I said. Because she asked a question, why do you want it in Spanish? And I feel like I can answer that question because that question was asked.
Right, and I would really like to have you answer that in the context of all the input, and I I don't want you to lose that opportunity to provide that, okay? So we will be there in a few minutes. Scott. Scott here, Scott.
Yeah. I'm here, can you hear me?
We sure can.
Okay, good. So I'm a former member of the HRC. Then my interest, I don't know if I'm prepared to answer the question that was put out there. But I am interested in just following the activities of the HRC moving forward. I if I would have had more time to be able to address what the purpose is or what I'd like to see, probably could have been much more eloquent than I have now. I'm I'm here for to, you know, put whatever input I can as a. You know, a citizen of the of the city.
Okay, well, thank you, Scott.
You bet. Thank you.
Greg, I think you're next. And again, the question is, are, do you have identification of any problems or issues that you think the commission is needing to address or resolve?
Well, thank you, Dr. Hammond. I would, I have to probably agree with Derek. I I'm kind of new. And I'm I'm not an excellent public speaker, but I was compelled to join this because I just felt compelled that I just was real proud of Mayor Johnson. And so I just decided that I did, I I'm not really sure exactly, you know, what the challenges are. But I I felt like I wanted to support him in the zoo and never and. And so I just felt like I just wanted to bridge some political divides and just make Albany a safer and more comfortable place to be. And so that's why I'm here kind of to support the new mayor Johnson and. That's that's what I have to say about that.
That's great. Thank you, Greg. Leslie.
Good evening. So as far as this question. I've lived in Albany for fourteen years now, and over that fourteen years, I feel like I've seen. The city change quite a bit. When I first moved here, it felt pretty. Pretty much the same throughout. And what I've noticed in especially maybe the last few years is an increased amount of diversity. And I've studied diversity quite a bit in my educational career. And. What I've found is that diversity actually makes for a stronger community. Because, you know, I I like to use the analogy that if you have a problem and you fill the table with people who are all the same. Then you're likely to get the same kind of suggestion, you know, they're they're all going to have. They'll bring their perspectives to it, of course, but the solution would be very similar from person to person. Whereas if if you see a diverse group of people at a table, the creativity that that causes just because of those different backgrounds. You find out that not everybody thinks exactly like you, and you can come up with a much more creative solution. And, you know, I also know that with businesses who are diverse are generally much more successful. And I think that's important to a city like Albany that continues to grow. Because we want those businesses to come in and feel welcomed, and we want them to be successful. So I I think that, you know, one of the issues I believe we can address is that. We need to be able to provide a place where all voices can be heard. And I think that the power differential that you have with some communities versus another. Is that some of those ones that don't have traditionally have power don't get heard because they don't have a place at the table. So I see us as being a group that. Can hear those concerns and amplify that voice so that we do create a more even playing field. Because I I think it's just, it's a matter of fairness. It's a matter of. Including people, and when you're not including them, even if it does feel like maybe you don't need to do something in particular. You don't know what that's going to mean to that community member who can suddenly, you know, hear their language from somebody in power. So, you know, I I think that's the important pieces that I wanted to touch on.
Thank you, Leslie. Yeah, Peter had mentioned that one of my backgrounds is being a marriage counselor and which is. A really interesting job. And one of the things that I would often say to couples who came to me trying to resolve their differences. As I would try to remind them that if if they agreed on everything, one of them would be unnecessary. And just. So.
Greg, may I interrupt for a little bit?
Sure. You're the manager.
Well, as I as I see you struggling with our go to meeting platform, I. Well, as I, as I see you struggling with our go-to-meeting platform, I, I just want to draw your attention to a, a little thing at the top of your screen that says view. If you select view active cameras. Then you will only see the people with their cameras on. And if the only people with their cameras on are counselors and commissioners, I think that'll make your life a little, and, and me and Kim. That'll make your life a little bit easier.
Yeah, thank you, Peter. Stephanie.
Hi, thank you. So looking back at my tenure, uh. For my first term on the HRC, my experience as a member of this community and also through research and how other city commissions. Uh, you know, in other cities that have similar missions to us, how, how they're structured and run, um. Personally, I'm particularly impressed with the City of Ben's Human Rights and Equity Commission. I feel that, you know, the problem and challenge that we could address and solve, um. You know, our mission should be to ensure that historically marginalized and underrepresented people. In, and, and in Albany have equal access to city programs, to services. And representation in city decision-making and a venue to raise concerns and complaints about discrimination. Additionally, uh, HRC to serve as a place where, you know, people in our community that are the most marginalized do have those access points to engage with city government. Um, historically, this is where diverse communities, LGBTQ, Latinos, immigrants. Even new members of our community who, you know, have moved here from, you know, Woodburn or, or other areas. Where they can come to learn, understand, um, and engage in inclusion at the city level. Um, it's a place where doors open, um, to leaders at the local government level. And also can help, um, inspire new leaders, just like I, how, uh, Counselor Stacy Bartholomew said, how her interactions with the HRC. Several years ago inspired her to get more involved. Um, and then in addition, I, I believe that our mission and what we should do is to work with Albany community, interested groups, staff. Um, elected officials and, and make recommendations that embrace our. The City of Albany's commitment to building a more inclusive community that is better for all, and actually. To be a weirdo, um, I created my own sign here. It says, every day is your chance to make Albany better. And that's something I really firmly believe, like if you had, if anyone's been in my office. Yeah, the, everyone here has the same opportunity. To make Albany better, and every day we can all make that decision to move forward. Thanks.
Thank you, Stephanie. Uh, Counselor Olson, good to see you. You're muted, Dick. You're still muted. There we are.
Hey, thank you. I always need a coach on this, um, this, uh, kind of computerized stuff. So thanks. First of all, I want to say I'm sorry I'm late. I was late. And, uh, I'd been thinking about the council meeting while I was out in the backyard chopping up some wood. But the thing I forgot about was that it was going to start at six rather than, um, seven fifteen, so here I am late. And, uh, a little background, I've, uh. I, I was in the council all the seventies. I was elected seventy-two and I served through nineteen eighty. And then I was elected again in nineteen ninety-eight. So I've served with, um, I think it's five, maybe six different city managers. And not quite that many mayors, but, uh, several mayors. And, um. I, my experience is that most times our council has been fairly receptive to listening to what, uh, people had to say. Now, uh, the last, um, four years, I can't necessarily say that. But, um, councils prior to that, I think they were, uh, pretty good at listening to what people had to say. And, um. One of the things that I've been proud about was that, um. In, in the past, uh, the council would listen to the public in the early part of the meeting. And let them say what they wanted to say, not limit the, uh, their time. But, um. Now, the council has decided that they're going to put a three-minute time limit on what people can talk about, and, uh. I, I've objected to that, and I, I think I, I'm sad to see that because all my previous spent. Uh, time on the council, and some people took unfair advantage of it. But, uh, most people were, uh, pretty polite and, uh. When the mayor would say, you're, you're straying from the subject, and you, and you finish up, they, they would be good about that. Uh, as to the question about, um. What, uh, we need, we can do to make the, uh, uh, meet the challenges, uh. Again, I think listening, and a couple of you have said that you think that's, uh. Important that we listen to what the public has to say. Um, one thing, a couple of things that I've observed lately that are encouraging to me. Uh, one was the demonstration we had, um, uh, last summer about Black Lives Matter. And fortunately, I thought about that before it happened. I was able to get down there and, and observe and, um. Uh, one woman, I had to leave, and she said, you want to have my sign? I said, sure. So I, I carried the sign. And I was glad to see how, um, happy and encouraging most people were during that demonstration. A lot of cars came by there on Ellsworth Street, and most of them kind of, uh, honked with their thumbs up, and I thought that was great. And I, uh, I didn't see any negative stuff there. And another thing that I, uh, I really enjoyed, and I'm sure some of you, uh, tune into Hossel Herring's blog. HH Today. And did you see the one about the man and his mom? About, uh, Ben Johnson and his mountain down there in Southern Oregon? That has been renamed recently because, uh, it was, uh, it had been, um. Well, and even Hossel couldn't bring himself to use the forbidden word. But it had been changed to Negro Ben's Mountain. And, uh, very recently, they decided that wasn't quite appropriate either. So they have now changed it to Ben Johnson Mountain. But the part I liked was that after he got done prospecting for gold down there. He moved to Albany. And, uh, he, he was, uh, he was black. And he, uh, did some, uh, blacksmithing here in Albany. And, um. When they had a major snowstorm that caved in his shop, the, the community got together and helped him rebuild his shop. But to make a, uh, a much longer story short. Uh, the part that I appreciated about it was that both he and his wife. Are buried in the Masonic Cemetery. So he was not only accepted, but he was made to be a mason. And I thought, you know, Albany was a great place for diversity in those days, and I think it's still a lot the same. Now, maybe I'm oblivious to problems that we have with diversity. And if I am, I'd like to hear about them because I'd like to see what I could do, if anything, about it, so.
Thanks, Zach. Thank you very much. Uh, Counselor Kowinski.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I've got a couple of issues, uh, that concern me about, uh, going forward. Marilyn alluded to some of the beginnings, uh, back in twenty seventeen, we had a pretty, uh, heavy lifting meeting where there was a lot of, uh, information, uh, gathered. About changing the language of the purpose, uh, for the HRC. And it didn't come out unanimous, nevertheless, it did get passed, uh, which was a good thing, but in the aftermath. Uh, it was the HRC and I believe other commissions too, uh, were directed to not advocate. They could only report on what was happening. And I think that was a backward step, and I firmly believe that any commission should in fact actually advocate for what their purpose is. Uh, I think it's a disservice to not be able to do so. It's like saying I'm on the tree commission, but I don't like trees. Whatever. Uh, the other thing is, I think, I think that language, uh, I think. We should allow all committees and commissions to actually in fact advocate for what they're trying to do. Now, the other issue is the purpose statement that we spent a lot of time, uh, discussing and hashing over. Uh, it was great, and that was, ended up being posted then on the website. But in addition, what was also posted on the website as to what the purpose, mission, or whatever the HRC. Also included a paragraph that is buried, uh, way down on the actual. Municipal code, chapter two point two five, down at, uh, the duties and responsibilities. And the last paragraph or the last several sentences of that talk about the duties of the commission will not include. And I think that is a point of contention that if, if we're in fact going to continue to have that specific language in there. Then that i- is something that we need to be wary of. Because my fear is that the potential outcome from this. Is that we'll have the possibility that everybody, and I think it was Leslie that mentioned this, uh, correct me if I'm wrong. That if everybody is required and mandated to think alike, we're into group think. And I don't think that is, I don't think that is correct. If you're not, if you're not allowing any kind of dissension whatsoever. I think that's a disservice to the, uh, committee or commission and to the community. So those are the two bigger, big issues that I, uh, take away from.
Thank you, thank you, Ray. I think I, hold on, Derek. I think, um. That we, everybody who's on the commission or the councils had a chance to speak now, am I correct? Have I missed anyone?
No, that is correct. I've kept a list. That's correct. I've kept a list.
Thank you. So, uh, I wanted to give a few minutes, uh, for question and answer. Commissioner, uh, Counselor Novak had already asked a question of Miriam, so Miriam, I want to give you a chance to respond to that.
Thank you, Greg. Um, so one thing that we need to make sure that us in HRC we do is. Provide training to our city counselors, um, on what it is to be anti-racist and training on bias. Because those type of questions would help answering with those trainings on why it's important to have inclusion. And equitable outcomes to all community members, and that includes, um, marginalized communities. So to answer your question, Counselor Novak, on why it's important to have the website in Spanish. Well, it's because Albany, it's a diverse group regardless if this is the United States of America. United States of America does not have a national language. It does not. You can look it up. It does not, okay? So with that, in order to be able to reach out to the community. We need to make sure we have this information in their target language. It doesn't have to be Spanish. It can be Hungarian, it can be in any language that the community serves. See, saying that, the Latinx community is one of them, and that is why I put my experience and what I had emphasized. With the Latinx community, because I'm bringing that voice forward, I'm bringing those disparities forward on what I'm noticing. In order to ensure that information is out there for the public, it needs to be in that language. Regardless, again, that this is the United States of America. Everything has to have a target language because we want to ensure that information is communicated. That is, that should be the key. So that is why I feel that the website should be. And different options of languages. Again, it doesn't have to be just Spanish. It can be Vietnamese. It can be every other language. This community serves. I'm just speaking on behalf of the Latinx community because that is where I represent and that is where I identify myself as.
Thanks, Miriam. Thanks. Uh, before we will move on, I want to see if there are any other questions. Uh, we've all had a chance to provide some input. Uh, which I've appreciated, uh, but you may, uh, I would ask that you, if you have a question, it's one of clarification. Uh, you remember, I tried to give you some guidance on what kinds of questions we might ask each other, but. If there's something that you want clarification on, uh, this would be a great time to ask that question.
Greg, Juan signaled that he'd like to speak. Not sure if you saw that.
Said it again.
Juan had signaled that he would like to speak.
Oh, okay.
I want to make sure you saw that.
And Derek.
Yeah, okay, Juan.
So, oof, what a fun meeting so far. Wow, local government is sure is interesting. This is the point of clarification. If a council member asked a question, um. Are we to respond right away, or should we wait for, i- i- in future meetings, should we wait for a, uh, for a period to discuss the question? I think what happened right there, um, between, uh, Ms. Novak asking a question and Miriam answering it is a great example. Of perhaps a, uh, someone on the HRC giving in, giving their input and their perspective. To a councilman, to the rest of the council, to have maybe something to chew on. But I guess my point of clarification is, should we expect to be able to speak right away? To the, to, to a question that's directly posited to us, or are we going to have, uh, a later time to, to speak on it?
So, uh, for the sake of this meeting, this is just a facilitated meeting. I have no idea how you want to run your future conversations. That's your business, uh, but I'm trying to maximize our opportunity to provide input, so I don't want, uh, I don't think. And again, I'm just a facilitator, but I don't think it is the purpose of this meeting to try to convince each other of anything. I think it is the purpose of this meeting to try and make sure that all of our perspectives are heard and a part of. The foundation for the decisions that need to be made going forward. So if there's something. So if there's something that someone said that we didn't understand. We might want to respond with a clarifying question. So, does that help, Juan?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, good. And Derek, you had a question?
Uh, my, excuse me, I apologize, I don't actually have a question. As I explained to Mrs. Rosen, um, I work night shift, so I was, I'm going to have to cut my time being short this evening. But if, um, in the future, I'll be able to address that, but I have to cut my time short. I've enjoyed this. I learned a lot, and I'm looking forward to the rest.
Oh, thanks so much, Derek. Any other questions on this con, on this, what we've heard so far?
Not a question, but I want to just let Juan, that we use, uh, for structure of meetings, Robert's Rules of Order. It's more like Bob's Rules of Order, where we're more chill. That's how, that's how we, that's how we usually run them.
Thanks, Stephanie. Good, good. So, um, uh, I have, uh, been given, I think, appropriate, uh, input to, uh, try not to have this meeting be three hours long, which was. Um, so I think, um, I want to let you know that what I heard. Were responses that were broader than just what kinds of problems we might have to solve. I think I heard things about. About what kinds of opportunities might be there for us, uh, in the commission's work. So I'm going to. I'm going to skip that question and move to the next one and then just ask you to try and be real specific in responding to that question, and that is. And I, I hope this is a, a question that inspires you to think something big. How do you think the City of Albany will be different if and when the commission is successful in its work? Do you understand the question?
Yeah, I'm wondering if our, if the fourth question would be more appropriate to discuss prior to the third question. Because it's talking about more of the actions and initiatives, and then using that, discussing like the actions and initiatives, then discussing how the City of Albany might be more. Uh, might maybe different if those actions and initiatives and our, our mission are successful. So, just wanted to make that suggestion.
Yeah, I, I mean, it's your meeting. I have a tendency to think that I like the actions to be defined by. What's our outcome, like this will, we'll have peace on earth or something, you know, um, but, um. I, I can, I can go with, uh, what you want.
However, everyone else wants to do it.
Yeah, well, I want to keep moving forward, so, um. I have heard responses actually to all four questions already, but, um, I, there's always this human tendency to want to get into things that are concrete. That makes us feel more comfortable, and, um, and that's great because, uh, moving forward is going to require concrete actions on your part. So I'm fine moving to that, that last question if there aren't any objections. And yes, Counselor Bartholomew.
I think the order of questions is actually appropriate because, like you were saying, the, the vision helps guide our actions. And the number three sounds like a vision of.
Exactly what it is, though. You've inspired me to stick to my original thing. And you can, you can very easily skip past on this one and we'll move quickly. That will be fine, okay? Okay. I'm going to start at the other end. I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask Ray, Counselor Kapinski, to respond to that. How are we going to be different because of this commission?
Long range, I believe, or you wouldn't, we would no longer have a need for a meeting like this. And, and we would relish any events that are very, very inclusive for the community because the, the community becomes better and it thrives. And it becomes more of a community that we can all be proud of. So I go back to my concept of being allowed to have the commission actually in fact advocate for doing some things. And yes, then bring those to the council for a decision. But at least they, they've done some homework and said, we haven't done this before. I think this could be a lot of fun. And some of these things are, they're just a lot of fun and that they're engaging for the community. I think that's what helps make a community.
Great. Thank you so much, Ray. And Counselor Olson, same question. How are, how is this community going to be different or better because of this?
I think if the, we and the committee mission are really successful, I would like to see our police department be brave enough that they can walk around in civilized civilian kind of clothing rather than the military armored up uniforms they wear and be walking around rather than driving around in their military kind of vehicles. And maybe we'd have a chance to talk to them about our community rather than being afraid we were going to get nailed for who knows what, gotten some kind of a ticket. So that's something I'd like to see. And that would be a measure of success for me.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Derek. How about you, Scott? Scott Lolling?
Scott's not on the commission.
Okay, we'll skip to Greg. Soriano.
So, success. Again, this is all really new to me, so I'm just kind of imagining what success would be. And I just wrote a couple of things, I think. You know, diversity events, I think that would, that would be something successful. I think people just feeling safe in the community. And, and you know, right now, there's such a political divide in, in the United States. So I feel like we can kind of close, there'll be so success if we have some communication with some of those political groups. So there's not so much adversity. So those are a few things. But I, but I, the more I, this is so educational for me, and I think that's the huge thing is, is just educating the community and feeling safe in the community. And that's kind of what, that's kind of what I'm all about. So anyway, that's, that's it.
Great, Greg. Thank you so much. And Leslie?
Well, first I have to admit that I am an idealist and I have probably the scars from some of the windbills I've charged at. But I think the, the world peace sounded good. I was kind of hoping you could guarantee that. But, but outside of that, I, you know, I envision this community that can celebrate each other's differences, that we can go to different cultures kind of celebrations, that there is like an ease between groups. Because we've done the education and understanding that I, I think a lot of the resistance to joining together is based out of fear because we don't know each other. And so I guess that future that I envision is that we don't have that fear that we do feel safe. And that we can go together as a community to build, you know, whatever we want Albany to be, which I think is going to be very important in the days ahead.
No, thank you, Leslie. Stephanie?
Thanks. Leslie, can we please work on world peace? I'd love that, too. I, I want Albany to be better for all. So I, I feel if we're successful, people left out in the fringes of our community, folks from underrepresented or marginalized communities are brought in rather than being left out and that Albany would begin to, or if we're, I guess, when we're successful, Albany will live up to our proclamation of being a welcoming and equitable city. So I think that that, that's kind of our own little slice of world peace here in Albany. It would be awesome.
Great. I'm getting inspired. Thank you. Counselor Novak?
Yeah, I'm gonna join the world peace bandwagon because I feel like if, if we not only work ourselves out of a job on this commission committee, like Counselor Kapinski alluded to, we would also just, in, in my highest hope, just be really unified. I don't know if I'm just supremely blessed or what, but I've lived in communities where I've gone to church with just such a diverse range of people. And that didn't end when I left Los Angeles and moved back to Albany. I, I feel like I experience an awful lot of community on a daily basis, even in my own restaurant with, you know, the people that we work with, the people that we serve. I, I, I don't know. I guess I am new to this commission too and new to the city council. But I, I see an awful lot of unity in diversity. I really do. I, I, I've experienced it, I would say, every single day of my life, regardless of where I lived. And I've lived in different parts of the country and, you know, not just on the West Coast. And I guess maybe what I'd like to see is people being more aware of just how, just how, how do I say it? Not only how, how much we have in common, but how, well, especially how much we have in common. Because we are, we're, we are diverse, but there's variety. There's like, we have so many, we're just, it's like a garden. You know, there's so many different kinds of flowers. And even in a single type, there's, there's so much diversity. So I just want to see people more aware of that and more aware of how, how unified and how we can love each other. As, you know, and I don't know, I'm not saying it very well, but I hope you're getting the gist, so.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Counselor Novak. Counselor Bartholomew?
I am very happy to answer this question because as soon as I, I thought of it, I had a vision of how it was different for me, my, my expectations of Albany from the reputation before I got here and my experience after I got here. And I just wanted to give a little approbation to our former mayor because it, within the first couple of weeks that I was here, that was the first person who welcomed me to Albany. And it was, it made a huge difference for me because I was, being LGBT, I, I was a little nervous. And so eight years ago, when I moved here, that was a, a thing that I wanted to see, and I want to continue to make Albany a welcoming community, a colorful community, a safe community that, like, I love, Leslie's the word, ease. You know, you can walk in anywhere in Albany and feel the welcome, the safety and, you know, engaged in Albany. Thank you.
Thank you again. Yeah. Miriam?
Okay, so what I, what kind of actions and our initiatives do you envision?
No, we're focusing on, yeah.
Or is it, yeah, right? Because we're looking, we're talking about what actions we think.
We're talking about how the city of Albany will be different.
When this is, yeah.
Right.
Okay. So by having a successful HRC, what it would bring is, like many of you have said, unify the community. But also I think it would make, you know, people feel like they belong here. I think sometimes with, with certain communities, we feel like we're not wanted here and that we shouldn't be here. And I feel that as the HRC wants it successful, you will start hearing from the community that this is a welcoming place and that they belong and that they are part of the community. So I feel that with the HRC, I would bring that forward and those voices forward. And so I, I really do envision us being a good ally to the community, but also being there for bringing in different perspectives to, for the city council to hear. Because sometimes they're, you know, within their ward, they might not hear all voices. And I think we are here to make sure those voices are heard. And so I feel that in order to be successful, there should be open to that, listening to that. Even though you might not agree fully with what they say, you need to listen. That's the key thing of listening to the people. I believe that's what creates and unifies us into giving them that respect. Do, are we talking about the actions or is that next time?
Next time. Hold off. We'll get to it. But thank you. Thank you so much. Dana?
Sure, thank you. So I can tell you, I'm a little confused since we changed the questions around. And it sounds like we're answering the last question, but we're not suggesting actions.
No, we're, we just skipped one of them. So we're really just, how will the city of Albany be different with this commission being successful?
Okay, gotcha. So I'm going to go ahead and share. For me, in order to explain, because I, I just jotted down some really quick responses while people were talking. And it's easier for me to take the time that I'm given and respond to sort of different little pieces that fit in best. So I'm just going to share where I'm at at this point by listening to what everyone has shared. And I will definitely answer the question that came around. And it won't take too long. So I would start by saying to question one, because we start off with what problems or challenges is the commission meeting. It's important, in, in my understanding, to know the history of Albany and the history of Oregon if you're going to share on a commission that creates human relations, meaning communities that function well together. Another aspect that I'm going to share today is the fact that I have spent over 10 years learning about equity, diversity and inclusion. And I say that to say that I've spent that time learning about myself. So EDI has nothing to do with learning about other communities. It basically teaches an individual how to respectfully learn about people that might be different than yourself. So each one of us is very, very different in many, many ways. And equity, diversity and inclusion helps to have cross-conversations that jump into and dive into other cultures that are different than the one that you start with. And so it's not, it's not an end goal. I haven't reached a, a final place. It's something that I've committed to doing in the future. So of course, my thought with a group like this is that other people would want to know about that so that as you, as a council member, or you as later a senate representative, can more comfortably have conversations with other people, other communities, or someone who has a different background, even if it's just grew up with a different religion, that you feel comfortable having a conversation outside of your own personal, normal space. So I, I want to explain that because I think that it's really important for this group to know that. Also, in this state of 2021, we are definitely in a place where a lot of things are changing and changing rapidly. There are times when we have had community members here locally in town and community members in our large cities and our small, small towns. Again, I have been in the state for many years that are not just feel unsafe, that actually are unsafe. We have had violent attacks. We've had actions from schools, from youth. We've had things from large protests to very small individual things that are happening. And so I think that it's important since councillors represent their ward, but our commissioners here also are supposed to represent a piece of the city, that we just begin to address some of the really basic stuff that's definitely in a room like this and that also feeds what we saw in the news that happened with this commission. So everybody responded because it ended up in the news. And my thought is that people want to have something that they're doing that at least looks okay for themselves and the people that they see themselves to represent for the city with this group. So really quick to answer number two, what opportunities might the commission open up for the city of Albany? I don't believe that this committee can bring equality for the city as it is written. Like I said, I hope that each person, when you have another chance to share about EDI, is comfortable sharing any experience that you might have had. And I know we had a few people already share in learning about inclusion. And so that doesn't mean business training or political training or human resources. It means like studies in communications, studies in equity and diversity and inclusion. I do think that that will help in the long run. And then I'd also like to share whether, so one, two, so I get the feeling we might skip one. So should I answer three or should I save that? Are we going to have two more rounds or just one?
Well, we may not make it through another one. We'll see. But I really, what I was really hoping is, and I think you've, you've certainly expressed pieces of it. How do you, how do you hope the community that we share be better? What's, what's going to be better?
Gotcha. Like what would actually make things better, right?
No, that would make it better, but how will we be better?
How do I envision things being better? Okay, absolutely. So I would say that I'm, I'm going to use an example from the document that came out again, because I really appreciate some of what was done. And down in two point two five point zero four zero, it says that "In formulating its recommendations, the Human Relations Commission self-strive for the actions that lead to positive and respectful relations committing to diversity, equity and inclusion in the community." So I really appreciate that wording, but right after that, it also says that the duties of the commission will not include the investigation or the sanctioning of individual acts of unlawful or discriminatory behavior, but will instead focus on recommending community activities that may be expected to promote positive change. Now, after those 10 years of learning about people that are way different than myself and, you know, in so many different ways, whether it's religion or the state that you grew up in, knowing what, how Oregon was founded, knowing what has happened in our local communities, knowing that we had 200 trucks show up with arms, like armed, to support their political viewpoints at the Lynn County Fairgrounds here in the last three months, knowing that those things have happened. I'm aware that you cannot have one and still have two, meaning those two separate sentences that I read. You cannot achieve your end goal if that's where you're starting. So for me, it would be to adopt a separate advisory commission that would be focused on equity and human rights and also to adopt a corresponding equity of diversity and inclusion, which is functional within less than a year, but that would have an actual staffing within the city. Because the reason for that would be that equity, diversity and inclusion with annual training requirements would come from the advisory boards, the city staff. And then after that training had happened, after there was a commitment for both the advisory boards, the council members and the city staff to spend some time learning about those things, then you could dive into what else is written in this statement, which is that it goes into the community. So it's really difficult to say we're going to support something if we don't, if we haven't taken part of it ourselves. It's really difficult to ask a group to give other people EDI if they've never taken the classes. And again, to do it, it takes a lot more than two hours a year. For most people, it takes about three hours a month for two years. And again, to do it, it takes a lot more than two hours a year. For most people, it takes about three hours a month for two years. Or for a year. And so tho- those are commitments that people who've been in the world of learning about this. Make to themselves, but it's also something that this group could do, because we have two groups together tonight, of course. It's something that each individual can decide they want to do personally, but it's also something that a group like this would be expected to do. To know about in order to, like you said, or like was written, provide that for the community.
Thank you, Dana. It's important to hear your voice. We appreciate that.
I apologize for my voice again.
Mayor Johnson. You're muted.
I've got like four monitors, I'm sorry. I, I think, I think I've, I've mentioned this before in my talks with people. I think that we, we as a city, when we're more accepting of each other, not tolerant of, of each other. Accepting of each other's differences and also celebrating our, what we're, how we're the same in so many ways. You know, I got criticized for being not so, not stating that I'm a black mayor or a black candidate. But I'm an American first. You know, and it's important for people to understand is that we have to stop using these labels to identify who we are. I'm an American man of African descent. But I'm, I, but I am just the mayor of Albany, you know, and I think if we all accept one another. Not tolerate. Tolerance is a bad word when it comes to dealing with people. Accept each other for who they are. You know, and if, if there are discussion points we need to have, let's have those discussions. It's okay to be uncomfortable. Getting out of your comfort zone is, if people can do that without walking away feeling like they've been hurt. So a successful commission to me is, is I can walk down the street and not be unfair of anything. I mean, that Latina, Latinx can walk down the street and not be unfair of anything. You know. Anyone can be happy in this city if we all just be better to each other and be better together. So a successful community, uh, commission is a commission that helps bring people together and celebrate. Being part of this community, being who we are, being accepting of each other. Pretty basic.
Yeah, well, the basic, but really important. So thank you, thank you for that. Counselor Smith, Maryland.
Thank you. Something that I've thought about throughout the meeting is that. I see this as an opportunity, I will. Albany will be different because. We will have. I'm, I'm stumbling here. I've been thinking about it. I didn't put it in words. I came to Albany as a single young woman. Forty-one years ago. I am now almost eligible to get my COVID shot.
Me too.
And I've lived in the same house for forty-one years. Albany was half the size it is now when I moved here. It was a very different place. But it's changed in ways that I like. I've stayed here all this time because I like living here. I like what I see. I like the people who live here. And they're very different people from the people who were here when I moved here. Many of those people are gone now. I, I like being introduced to new people. I like learning about different ways of life. And that's what this commission has the opportunity to enhance. It has the opportunity to not only connect different, people who are different because of economics or. Occupation or color or orientation. It has the opportunity to, to link old people like me with the young person that I used to be. And those young people are different young people than I was forty-one years ago. I like people of different ages. And I, I like the opportunity to learn about new cultures. I think the commission has, has such potential. Given, um, given encouragement and given free rein to bring ideas to the council without judgment. Say, can we do this? Would you join in? I would love to have Albany like that. I'm reminded of. A proposal by a group of skinheads and they described themselves that way. They were neo-Nazis who came to the city. And asked for a parade permit. And I believe it was nineteen ninety-five, they were going to have a parade. Through downtown on Hitler's birthday. And the city granted them the parade permit. And a local business owner said, I think we can do something better than that. And organized and everyone's neighborhood food festival for the same day. And put together this, this lots of, lots of different people bringing lots of different food. It was a big success. The parade never happened. They, we never heard from the neo-Nazi group again. And that was the, the, kind of the spark that eventually bubbled into what's now the Human Relations Commission. That, it goes back that far. The person who started the, the internet, essentially an international food festival of one day, became mayor two years later. And was a one-term mayor, but it, it was, uh, it is, it was, he created some change. And change is good. I like what I see. I like the way people are talking this evening. Everybody's being respectful. We can carry that through and, and work as a group. And I'm rambling now, so I will shut up, but. Let's connect old and new and, and move, move ahead.
Maryland, I really, I didn't have that historical context. I really appreciate that. Thank you.
That's what having an old person on the council can be valuable.
I'm as old as you, come on. We're, we're gonna move on, Juan.
All right. I can hear myself. Am I that loud?
We got an echo. I'll try turning my mic off.
Thank you. All right, I think we're good to go. So. Just to reiterate the question, sir, if you, Greg, how will the city of Albany be different when this commission is successful? Is that correct? I'm gonna assume yes. Yeah, my, my camera's up there. Everyone else is down there. And so that's why, yeah, okay. So. How do you state this in a very respectful manner that still conveys the emotional feelings I have about it? So in the future, I would love it if a recommendation put forth by someone on the HRC. That hit the tones of inclusion and diversity. Wouldn't be met with incredulity by a council person. Our job, the HRC, as, as I see it, and I think a good part of this meeting today. Is about locking down the role of the HRC. Human Relations Commission is to lock down what we're supposed to be doing. And in the future, I hope that. Suggestions made by the HRC are taken seriously by the council members. Because we have to be advocates of diversity and inclusion. And if, for example, if. Our city website doesn't have a alternate language for a large majority of its citizens. It would seem to be kind of a logical, uh, extension that we would put something. In the language of a sizable minority of the city. On a personal note, I'd like to just tell a little story real fast. It won't take too long. But when I was a young lad, I am a first generation American as well, and I consider myself. Well, a Texan first, then an American, and then a Mexican-American, Mexican El Salvadorian American. Yes, a Texan. But when I was growing up, my mother, she understands English very well. She has, she's shy about speaking it. And I remember. Her taking me by the hand as of like ten years old, taking me by, to her meetings that she would have to have done for like the electricity. Or something else, or paying bills and having me translate. For her. Well, that boy is grown up now, and I'm here. I'm going to advocate very strongly. For those people who have been marginalized to be accepted into society. And to, and for city services to become available to them. It just seems like a very logical thing to do. That if you have a human relations committee whose goal is to vote diversity. Fostering issues between people, all about that. I, I, to my liberal friends, also for my conservative. I like it. On the Human Relations Committee to bring forth these kind of things to, I want it to be a safe space. Whatever that is, that's a weird word, but I want to be able to talk to you guys. And be able to say, here's some ideas. Let's hear your feedback on it. But the day, I'm always gonna strive for more people in and not trying to push people out. And, well, we only speak. Do we speak American? I don't think so, because it was sorts of languages. I think it's beautiful, so. Does that answer the question? I don't really know, but I felt it very important to let you guys know what to expect of me. Is I do want to reach out my hand across the aisle. I want to know. I want to know your input, but also I feel, it feels very important that we are advocates in a sense. And the things that we are advocating for are for inclusion and diversity. And I don't think those are bad things. I think that should be the focus of the group.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Juan.
Yeah, thank you.
Like so many of you, I just, I just encourage, I'm encouraged by your enthusiasm, so thank you. Bessie, you get to wrap this question up. How will the city of Albany be different when this commission is successful?
I've been listening to everyone and I appreciate everyone's input, and I think that's what we need to do, but. I think that we're, one of the problems that has happened prior to now is the same thing that's kind of happening today. If we want this commission to be successful. We have to listen to everybody and we're not all gonna agree. And let's not jump on somebody else. If they don't agree with you or they have a different idea. I think this is what communication is, and you talk it out and come to a common ground. But you don't say, well, this is, it's my way or the highway. I think we can get there. I do like raise idea about. Having events, but they should be for everyone. It shouldn't be a Latino event or a Hungarian event or a German event. I go to St. Mary's here in Albany, and we had a younger priest quite a few years ago. And he had everybody just to hop it. We had a festival that. We had food and dances and everything else for everybody, so that everybody felt comfortable going. It wasn't just like, okay. This is a Latino thing, so well, I don't really want to go there because, you know, I guess it's for. And I don't want, I don't want to offend anybody, but it's like for their kind. Well, yeah, so if we had, you know, if it was diverse. Like everyone wants it to be, then maybe that would be. I do like the mayor's idea of saying that we should have. It changed it to a community commission because as soon as you put it into a box. That's what people are gonna go against. They're just not gonna be there. So if we, we have to include everybody. You want inclusive. And, and whatever. That doesn't mean just one or two sections of the community. We have to do it all together. I like Marilyn's thought. You know, when she grew up here. Uh, came here, it, it was a different Albany. I came here in eighty-eight. It's a different Albany now. My husband was born and raised in this county, and he told, he has told me the history. And it isn't pretty. And so we've come a long way, and if we have patience and don't expect it yesterday. And we start working together instead of getting into our own little corners and say, well, this is what I want. I just, we have to listen to each other. And like I said, I think that is the problem that happened with the last commission. Is that a different idea came in and so, oh my God, I'm not gonna listen to that. I'm not gonna listen. And so I think if we all listen, and I can tell this is a different council this time and a different commission. And I don't see there's, Albany's gonna be a better place if we don't just put it into a box. Let's, let's diversify and say, okay, let's be a community-wide. And I think we'd get a lot more participation. And, you know, anybody can, you know. If they're afraid to do something, then maybe they can have a, another advisory group or something that, that. For each different type of, you know, each section of the community. To have someone come and talk, you know, for them, because it's hard to come and talk to the council. Let me tell you. You know, if you have an issue. It's difficult, so maybe that's something that we could actually work on is to say, okay. Let's see, I'm sorry, Miriam, you know, say, okay, Miriam's gonna come to the council because this, you know, this group or that group. We're having a problem with this, you know, and, you know, so that's what I'm thinking that I think we can, Albany can be a better place. If we just listen to each other and don't, don't, and think outside the box. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Bessie.
You, you should have never let me be last. Too much time to think.
It really was, so. One of my favorite. I guess leadership business teachers, a guy named Clayton Christensen. Had said that, that we focus way too much on strategic planning, and he says we need to also have. Great skills in what he called adaptive planning. And that is, as things progress, you realize that things are different than when you made the plan. And therefore you need to change. So I'm going to suggest we make a change. I, I think we're coming close to the end of the time that we should spend together this evening. And what I would like to suggest, and again, this is the mayor's, I think, call here. Or, and is that. We take everything that's put in input this evening and try to sort of organize it in a way that helps us. And helps us come to the next meeting with some ideas about what the purpose charter. However you want to call it, looks like. And, and then in the context of that, in a sense, answer that final question. So what kinds of activities would we then put in the commission's. Sort of toolbox in order to help it serve that purpose. And I think that that would, I think that will help us to complete our work. And, and I also think that, I don't know if you've ever heard of a book called Quiet by Susan Cain. But I'm an introvert and introverts need time to process input. And, and if we really want to be inclusive in our thinking, we need to provide opportunities for both the extroverts who get to speak right now. And the people are gonna take two days to figure out what it is that they think. And so I think this process will help us to do that. So I don't think, we're not pushing anything off the table. We're just saying. I think it might be helpful to try and end here. And, and then at our next meeting, which I think we have tentatively scheduled. We come back with some sort of synthesis of what's happened here. And then, and then talk specifically about the kinds of actions that we would want to see from a commission. In order to achieve that purpose. Mayor, does that make sense or?
So, so that does make sense, but I would like to give some homework if possible. I, I think one of the things that I've heard here today is that we don't know each other. So I wanted that next meeting scheduled for Peter, if you can let me, or Kim, Director, Director of the.
March twenty-two, March twenty-two.
March twenty-second. So I would appreciate it if everyone could have spent at least. Thirty minutes for four different people on this commission, just getting to know them. And that way, when we come back, we'll be smarter and we'll, we'll know each other better when we come back to that March twenty-second meeting. And that way when we come back, we'll be smarter and we'll, we'll know each other better when we come back to that March twenty-second meeting. So I know I need to spend time with Commissioner Toriano and Commissioner Shet, Commissioner Chartier, because I don't know them. And so let's take a few minutes to get to know one another before that next meeting, so at least three to four people. And I'd like to spend some time with Commissioner Moteyabi. I think that would be very beneficial to all of us that we come together next time with a little know, like and trust. We all know each other better, we act a little better, and we also start building that trust. So if that's okay with everyone else, I think that we can move forward. Go ahead, but Counsel, Counsel Johnson.
Yes, I was gonna say, is it possible that Kim or Peter could send us a list and the phone numbers of all of the committee? That would help.
And emails too.
Yes, emails would be great. Okay, thank you.
So is everybody sound okay with that idea?
It's a great idea.
Oh, go ahead, Counselor Novak.
Juan, thank you. I also was wondering if, because I don't think we talked about actual actions, things we'd like to see happen, you know, events or whatever. I was wondering if for the March twenty-second meeting, we could all come back with at least one idea of something that we think that we'd like to, you know, an action we'd like to take for the community. Because I, I have one and I'd like to share it next time.
What do you think of that, Greg?
Yeah, I, I think I was, I think that's consistent with what I was suggesting, is that within the context of that sort of framing of purpose, we would then be able to suggest, here's an action or an activity that would help us achieve that purpose. So it happens within that, the frame, and I, does that make sense?
That makes sense.
So I think that we have a go ahead, Counselor. Or Commissioner Newton.
So I just wanted to clarify and make sure I understood all our homework. So Mayor Johnson, spend some time with folks. And then two, we will be discussing question number four and after reflecting on our discussion from today. Three, you mentioned something about discussing our charter or do we want to come with like any drafted changes or have a working document on this? And then I also have a suggestion for a small piece of homework and I can get the recording sent to everyone. But today there was a panel at South Albany High School where kids discussed how they're still being called the N-word and being dismissed by their teachers. And it was an enlightening panel and I'll be listening to it. I'd like all you guys to listen to it as well and use that moving forward as well. It's a great.
I think that's great. Commissioner Newton, can we send all this information to our liaison, Director Ladeen? If she can get it out to all of us. Is that, is that cool, Commissioner Ladeen? Thank you. Is everybody committed to doing at least three, three conversations with people in this call? Oh, excuse me.
We can try.
Commissioner Moteyabi, you got your hand up?
Oh.
Yes, I just wanted to, I want to personally invite everyone on here to feel free to text me as that's my preferred way communicating, any convenience for, for anyone. But in addition to that, I would, I personally would love to be able to have, now that we're in a reduced COVID area, if we could, I would love to meet people in person with respectful distance. And being able to really get to know one another because you're absolutely right, the Human Relations Committee should be about, you know, getting to know one another. And I know that I have some very strong feelings, but if we can't bridge getting to know one another, then what hope is there for the whole city? So with that in mind, I extend, please get my information from the email, reach out to me. I'd love to start a dialogue with, with everyone. So that's, that's it. I mean, nothing special, just text me.
Thank you, Commissioner, I appreciate that. Does anybody else have any comments?
I, I wanted to say that I do think that at some point it may be important to involve the community on some of the final decisions that are, that are made. So and of course, I believe that the council, you know, has their public meetings. I, I wanted to mention that I do think that's important as we get to the finalizing the decisions as far as how the committee, how the group will move forward. And I say that because the preventing the community from responding negatively might be better to do that in a proactive means. Rather than if the, our group, and it comes back to what Ray said about groups think, if this group gets on the same page and then, and then you move forward with the community. I just wanted to mention that as well, because this is a different group that we had than we had, you know, four months ago on the HRC. And I could definitely see everybody here getting to a similar place and how they feel about it. And then three months later, as interacting with the community, that, that idea of, of whether they're on board with everything. I do think that was important to, to mention, and of course, not in this part of the process, but in finalizing how, how this group is going to help create positive relations within Albany.
Thank you very much Dana, I appreciate that, Commissioner Morris. Does anyone else have anything? Then I'll turn the meeting over to
Carolyn Dust, and then I also have one short question.
Carolyn Dust, go Counselor, which Counselor Smith did that, where she is.
Thank you, Mayor. I, one small detail, wanted to let everyone know that for the last several years, we have had a Spanish translation available on our website. It's on every page. If you scroll down to the bottom of the page, you'll see an American flag and a Mexican flag next to the words English and Espanol. Google Translate is not perfect, but it does, it has evolved and it continues to be refined by the people who run it, and that was the best that we could do at the time. We were getting lots of requests, have always gotten lots of requests for Spanish translations and we have handled it that way because of staffing shortages.
Thank you, thank you, Counselor Smith. Commissioner Newton, you have one more thing?
Well, one, first, this is actually the first time that I've been able to see the faces and talk to every, all the new appointees for the HRC. So it's really exciting and I didn't get a chance to say welcome to everyone and I'm excited to work with you guys. It's gonna be awesome. And then two, quick question, are since we're meeting on the twenty-second, maybe this will be something for Kim, we still have our HRC meeting on the twenty-third?
That's good, that's a good point.
Good question. So when we set aside, we didn't know necessarily how much we were gonna get done this evening. And so we were optimistic that, you know, everything could fall into place, but we were also realistic that this would probably be a work session revision. So at this point, I would probably say because it'll still be a, and please, city manager or mayor, let me know if I'm incorrect here, but I would say since we won't necessarily have refined language and we'll still be in the
forming.
Finding and formulating period, I think we probably won't have a traditional HRC meeting in March until everything kind of gets finalized and settled. But I do know, I think it'll probably take the, the twenty-second work session as well as, I can imagine some additional conversation on the twenty-fourth. So I'll send out with homework, along with the dates and all that kind of good stuff that folks should have on their schedule moving into the next month. Fabulous, thank you.
Excellent.
And
go ahead, Greg.
Just Greg, Mayor. Kim and I guess Peter, who else? We need to have a follow-up meeting to take all, put this all together and get prepped for the next meeting. So I'll look forward to getting together, so, okay.
We'll set that up. Excellent. City manager, would you like to do some closing statements or would you like to do?
Well, no, I'm glad that we've had a, a good conversation. I didn't expect that it would be a short one. So I appreciate Greg facilitating as he did. I think it's more important that we get this right than we try to jam it into one meeting or two meetings. So Kim and I will, will regroup and figure out how to make the schedule work for the future. But thank you all for being here and engaging actively. And thanks especially to Greg.
Yes, thank you, everyone.
Thanks, everyone. So with that, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you all and I'll see you at the next meeting. I will be in a, in a process of appointing, Commissioner Morris, she'll be leaving the area. And so if anyone would be interested in participating on the HRC, have them fill an application or reach out to me, I really appreciate it.
Good night.